Alright ladies and gentlemen, the date is Monday, April 22nd, the time is 6:02 PM. I will now call this budget work session for fiscal year 24-25 to order. Would you please stand for the budget adjustments?
A budget lead is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Rich States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I will turn it over to our mayor, Mayor Hushour, for a brief introduction of what to expect for this session.
Alright, thank you Council President, and thank you council for attending this evening. I would like to begin this meeting by reading an excerpt from several of the town's past annual financial audits. Future revenues will be among the most important topics of discussion for elected officials in the coming years. Without an increase in revenue, the town will no longer be able to provide the same level of service to its citizens. Planning for the future financial health of the town will be the focus of the mayor and town council. Increasing real estate tax revenue can be accomplished via two means, by increasing the tax rate on existing revenue sources or increasing the tax base from which the revenue is collected. That's development of properties. Either method will be beneficial to the fiscal health of the town. That's the excerpt. We have been very lucky in utilizing our community to keep our tax rates stable while rebuilding infrastructure in the town. Thus, I am happy that we have kept tax rates stable for the first two years, two fiscal years, of my and three of our council members' terms. Our operating costs have stayed within our means, and at our current rate, we would be able to balance our operating budget once again. And the staff has done an excellent job of funding capital projects through grants, though the extraneous costs, associated costs, have slowly depleted our town's reserves to a concerning level. It is no secret that the town council members and I have been discussing the need to build a police station for our police department. Every year, the town spends seventy-five thousand dollars to rent a portion of a building that serves as our current station. This current location, while adequate in some regards, does not meet the codes as established by our policies in regard to building construction. The combination of annual expenses and inadequacy of the current space mandates a long-term solution. That solution is to build a police station. This will be an expensive endeavor, requiring a bond to pay the full expense of designing and construction. In the fall, should this budget pass by the council with this strategy, the staff will seek a bond allowing for a property acquisition and design in fiscal year 25. The station will be fully built realistically within about two to three years, barring any unknown variables. To repay the bond, the budget proposes a three-cent tax raise, taking our taxes from point one six-six-two to point one-nine-nine-two for a hundred dollars of assessed real estate value. This will supply enough revenue to make payments to the bond over a twenty-year period. I take some comfort in that even at this rate, Mount Airy will still remain the lowest taxed municipality in Carroll County. The budget is divided into four main sections: general operating, general capital, water and sewer operating, and water and sewer capital. The process for this evening, if the council president is willing, would be to have Katie Moore, our senior accounting clerk, go through the general operating budget. When she reaches the police budget, I'd request that we go from the general operating budget to the police portion of the capital budget in order for our chief to provide answers and input to all of our MAPD questions, then excuse him, and return to the general operating budget for all the other categories. Then general capital, followed by water and sewer. The goal is to get through the budget this evening. The budget must pass by a supermajority of four-one at the following council meeting. I would recommend that if a conversation on a particular item goes too long, that the president query the members to see if continued discussion is warranted. The staff is here to answer particular budget questions as needed. Feel free to engage them as needed. Again, thank you for your consideration of the FY25 budget and council president. And Katie, the floor is yours at this point.
And I, just to be clear, I am good with letting the MAPD go so that our chief can get on his way.
Okay. So we will start with page one of the general fund operating budget. So these are the revenues. I do have a change for the county share taxes. We just got our Frederick County estimate on four fifteen. So this number can actually increase to nine-hundred-and-four-thousand-four-eighteen. So would you please know where that changed?
Katie, can you just at least line item, or what lines that?
The four-zero, six-nine.
Okay, gotcha. For that increase in by how much?
So it'll increase by forty-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-seven to nine-hundred-and-four-forty-nine.
Yeah, I'm okay with that change. It's coming in, so we'll take it.
Was that the only change?
That was the only change I had for revenues.
All right, okay. Will the forty-five thousand will in total be adjusted somewhere else to transfer that?
Yeah, so we will, once we go through all the expenditures, depending on if we still have a positive, it'll increase the transfer over to capital.
Okay, that's what. Okay, cool, thank you.
So did anybody have any questions about any of our revenues?
Page two.
So this is just another continuation of revenues. Again, if anyone stood out, you had any questions at all?
Any questions at all from the council?
Quick clarify, page number forty-five, twenty-six, it says, could all your rentals, community garden plot rentals, and stuff? I just want to refresh, we don't charge any rental fees for the field running, correct? Is there any particular reason why it went down by?
I just kind of based that on fiscal year twenty-three's and what we've taken in so far. And I also did a calculation based on like how many plots, for the community garden, how many plots we have, what they're charged for.
Thank you.
I, line forty-seventy-two developer inspection fee that went up to fifteen thousand, what's? Is that the new impact fees? What is that?
So again, I based that on what we have taken in in the past. So the developer inspector fee is actually something that we get with a public works agreement. It's an eight percent fee that we take, or that is part of their agreement in order to do all of the inspections that is required. So I just increased that based on the last couple of years and what we've taken in, based on public works agreements.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now we are on page three, which is general government expenses.
Anybody up the town council salary by chance? No?
Now unfortunately, that wouldn't be in effect for you guys, it would be for the next elected people.
Any questions at all?
Yes, a quick question. Looks like that's dropped to thirty-one thousand, and that looks like the lowest it's been for quite a while. What was the rationale for dropping that?
Well, that was based on what we spent so far this year. You're talking about legal fees?
Yes.
Yeah, it's based on what we spent so far this year.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Yeah, our legal fees have gone down.
It's a good thing.
Yeah.
Alright, any other questions? Alright, you go.
Alright, so page four is office and building expenses.
Sorry, I got a quick, I'm sorry, I had to take a call from my daughter there, so sorry. Just a question on the previous page fifty-three oh-nine, the dues, meetings, and mileage. You got four thousand on the MML. I know at the previous meetings, there have been discussions of potential rate increases or fee increases.
So the MML monthly meetings, those are your...
Yeah, I know, different.
Like the different county meetings?
Yeah.
And then there's two thousand in there that's specifically for the joint county MML meeting that the town hosts.
Well, I'm just asking, there's four thousand, but I'm saying that there's been talks of, at the meetings, to increase the fees the towns pay into it. Have we?
I mean, we didn't adjust it for that. We kind of leave it at four thousand, because it's all based on how many meetings you guys actually attend.
Gotcha.
And as you can see from our twenty-three and twenty-two actuals, I mean, in twenty-two, we spent seventeen ninety-five, and twenty-three, we spent twenty-four eighty-three.
Okay.
So if there is an increase, I think it'll be okay.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Sorry, I interrupted, council president, forget it.
Any other questions at all?
We can ask that questions, send to. Katie, can you show them where the income is from the rental for the pharmacy at the training station?
Yes, that is in line items zero-one, zero-zero, zero-four-five, four-seven on page two. It says, rent one north Main Street, so it's sixteen-thousand-eight-hundred. It's around page four.
Alright, any other questions?
Sorry, council, another quick question. Notice under the line fifty-three oh-one, I guess it's just based on what we've done in the past and things of that nature, that the expenses for some of the items, like the town hall, the utilities and other things have gone down. And it's just based on...
It's based on what we've spent so far this year.
Okay.
If any of the numbers have gone down, it's either based on the actuals of the other years plus what we've spent so far this year.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Anything, bro?
Now this is office and building expenses, continue.
Any questions at all, Katie? We're going too fast.
No, I'm good, no.
Feel free to speak out. If we have nothing else, we can move on to six.
I'm good.
Again, this is another continuation of office and building expenses.
Any questions at all?
So now we're on to public safety. I'm actually gonna switch over to the MAPD worksheet, which is the smaller one that you guys have, because it just makes it a little bit easier to, there's better explanations on this report. So it starts with legal fees. We don't really have a lot of legal fees specifically for the police stations, the homes.
Oh, okay, let me get this up. Okay, so you're going over the individual pages, okay.
Should be in... Oh, I see what I did. I mixed up two pages, so my page two is your page three, and then my page three is your page two. Sorry.
No problem. I could tell, I just wanted to be able to say thank you.
Alright, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Should be council page three.
Yeah.
And then we'll go, we'll go back to page two for the council. That's what we're looking at on the screen.
Okay, a question. On page one, first item, fifty-one oh-eight salaries wages police. This...
Real quick, Steve, one second, I'm sorry. We're just, right now, we're on...
So he's on the breakdown of this, which is fine. I can stay here if you guys want to just ask questions based on the line items, and then I can go up to that page.
I got you.
So salaries are not on this because?
No.
I was gonna say salaries aren't in this, because that's what we discussed after the meeting, in the close session.
Okay, this, well, does this include the addition of a?
Of the twelve officer, yes.
Okay, so, alright, thank you.
Do we have any questions regarding the benefits?
Pete Crider.
Yeah, alright. So then council will flip back to page two for any questions.
These are just insurance.
Any questions at all, about insurance? It is the page two.
Gotcha.
And then all of them line up with mine from here on out. I accidentally moved it by mistake.
I mean, it looks like, oh, I mean, insurance payments are gonna be what it's gonna be, it's not much. Yes, I see someone up and someone down.
Any questions at all? And we will now go to council page four, and it should be all the same, figure it out. There should be electric and utilities. Any questions?
I will point out something, because it's probably gonna look questionable. So the tenant proportion share of landlord's operating expenses. It is significantly less for fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-five than it is for twenty-four, because we renewed the lease in twenty-four, and so it restarted our base amount. So that's why it's back down to thirteen-thousand-five-hundred. So because we were in like a month-to-month before we renewed the lease, we would get like ordinary payments that were a little bit more than what our monthly share would cover. And so that's why that number was going up.
Okay, so we're locked in right now with the new lease. Any questions at all? Alright. Any questions about network computer service? Training meeting, membership dues?
So there is, if you see under new hire testing, we did a count for two, because we're, one is the twelfth officer, and then the other one is if someone is promoted within, and we have to hire a new officer to cover that position.
Saying that, Katie, I'm not, I guess they adopted budgets fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, it's just, it's twenty-eight-hundred? Is that just based on us doing like one officer, or not using it for the full year or anything?
So we actually had two new hires in this year, and so we were able to get a better idea, where in the past, we were kind of guesting.
Gotcha, okay.
Where now, we actually know how much new hires is, because we have two.
So that should be close on that, we're not...
I feel like, at least in this one, that the cost per unit, or the cost per one officer, or one, I think, is all way on the left, so you can gauge. Thank you for doing, doing that, either Katie or the chief for doing that, however he said. Whoever designed it, Katie did, thank you, Katie.
Alright, any questions on the training meeting or membership dues? We'll move on to uniforms, gear, and equipment. Any questions at all?
We do, we do have extras, just in case during the year, in case something gets destroyed or something.
Extras as far as what?
Various equipments and stuff, like if there's, you want to say like, say if a piece of equipment gets broken, or age out, or something of that nature.
Right, so for holsters and things like that, we do, we do have one extra taser, and it's also, we do have some spare radios also. So we do have an abundance of different supplies there for the officers that are maintaining the coordination.
Yeah, that saves me questions answering later. I just thought I would say that in general to cover everything, just to make sure that we did have some spares if something went wrong.
Cool, thank you, chief. Any questions? I do have one question, and probably for chief. How often do we shop your sidearm carry as far as whether it's S and W, Glock, whoever it may be, to check pricing, et cetera?
So for the box in itself, I mean, mostly old Maryland law enforcement officers most carry that Glock in itself, and that being that, in fact, that there was some other, I'd say, active shooter of assailant, all of these magazines are interchangeable for all firearms in itself. So currently, we don't shop for anything else for them. If we did, we would go on to the state side and find out what facilities have other firearms that we're looking for. But we would not currently change anything for the Glock that we currently have.
And you feel comfortable with all the equipment you currently have?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Look at this question.
Office supplies. Alright, any questions at all? Phones remaining cable. Any questions, concerns? General admin expenses. Do you wake them? Fuel for vehicles and equipment, gas and oil, and also motor vehicle repair.
I did have a question earlier, but the town administrator answered that, it was related to potential cost savings getting somewhere else, but she clarified that the way they do it currently is the best way.
Alright, any other questions? Community enforcement. Anything else? Move on to community night expenses. Any questions at all? I will say, it does seem like this is a good investment, for the cost of bill for getting, you know, it's definitely money well spent. Community outreach and education.
A question.
Yes, sir.
So in previous years, we had the Main Street Safety Task Force, and now that's been blended into the Streets and Roads Commission. And over the previous two budget cycles, we had money specifically budgeted for some radar speed signs, which are now up and implemented, and I think getting good payback on those. And then we had educational materials. We had some yard signs for the Slow Down For Your Hometown campaign, and I think we're good there. And then we also have a brochure that's handed out by the officers to people who get warnings when they were speeding. I think we're in pretty good shape with that, but I think just as for last year, I just want to make sure in this budget, I guess especially under, somewhere in here, there's, there's, we might need about three-hundred, three-hundred dollars.
Jesus.
Make sure you're on your toes. There's a special gift certificate in the back of each brochure. Three-hundred dollars for printing additional brochures if you might need them. So is, is there some allowance within the community outreach budget where we need brochures printed and things like that? In the past, we've included that in there. I just want to make sure that's accounted for.
Yeah, it does not say street awareness of fifteen-hundred.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Alright, any other questions? Alright. The bike patrol program.
It's pretty simple.
Shouldn't be any questions there. Capital purchases, vehicles, and upfitting.
So this is to purchase one new vehicle and outfit it to be a marked vehicle.
Not...
For the new, for the twelfth officer.
Just a quick question, not gonna try and ignite a debate between Chevy and Ford's here, or anything of that nature, but is this for the Ford, have we priced out the price differences between, say, the Chevy Tahoe and the Ford Explorer?
I have the state listing for all of the vehicles that could be fitted for that in itself. So we're looking at other options and exploring that also, versus newer models versus, I guess you could say that they're like a prototype in itself. It's a demo. Demos are being used. Once they're not used anymore, they have, they already come with everything other than would be our computers.
So this is kind of like, not, I don't want to say worst-case scenario, but, I mean, there's potential for savings there depending on what you define what it is.
Yes, I think in itself is using numbers that are currently there. Because we use what we had for updating that we took, so I mean, the prices on some of it has rose further, but I wanted to go just a little above in itself.
And the vehicle would be purchased probably under the state fleet, I want to say the, whatever that purchase agreements called, state fleet agreement.
Right, that's why I have all of the numbers for the program, yes.
Alright, cool, thank you. Thank you, chief.
Can I just, so this is on the capital side, correct?
Yes, so we have moved, we have moved on to police capital.
Yeah, so if you're following along on the big sheet, then we jumped ahead several pages to cover the vehicle, because that's a capital expense.
Okay. The chief is simple.
Well, that's why I jumped in, because it's so easy to follow, when we're talking about the police.
So now we're under capital purchases and equipment?
Yeah.
Any questions at all?
So just to explain why they're all zeros. Some of the items, because we increased our threshold of what is capital, the threshold is now five thousand, some things are no longer considered capital, so they're on the operating side. And then, you know, we budget for these things in case it's needed every year, and we haven't really needed it. So I encourage to not budget for anything, and then, I mean, if we need something, we're gonna do a budget amendment, and they're gonna get it. So I didn't think that we needed to budget for just in case.
Okay.
Hence my, hence my question about the, if we had enough reserves for equipment, so.
Well, let me get it. If you need something.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
They're probably...
For sure, make sure you ask what you need.
Yeah.
Alright, any questions on that? Alright, we're on to capital projects, the police building. Any questions at all?
I do have a question. So we've got the five-hundred thousand, make sure we get my numbers here. It's kind of a carryover from last year, a reallocation, so to speak. And we've got five-hundred thousand for additional monies. You've got these specifically into land acquisition versus engineering and design. If we chose to use it all for land acquisition, could we? I mean, we can blend this any way we want. Is that correct?
Yeah, so if, say, we got really lucky and something only cost a hundred thousand, then we could use nine-hundred thousand for engineering and design. So we break it down into some categories and how we plan on spending it, but it's in one line.
Okay, and again, so we wanted to use all that for land acquisition?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, any other questions?
Just to confirm, we're done with the police side of it, correct?
Did they have any questions?
Sorry.
Did they have everything they need? That's my question. Let's make sure they have everything they need, because as we all ran on safety as an issue progressive, right?
And just in case you were wondering, Paisley has everything she needs.
Oh, yeah.
Paisley the best? I believe, yes, yes. Sorry, do a blank there.
Uh, I believe, yes, yes, sorry, do a blank area, yes, Paisley does have the best.
And I have a follow up question, so, so again, we do have budgeted in, in here now for one additional officer, because this is something that the community has been asking for for many years. I know when the police, when we stood up a police department, um, people wanted twenty-four seven covers, and that was the expectation. And this, this will now allow us to have twenty-four seven coverage every day, all year.
If you're referring to establishing that twelve officer, yes, or you can go twenty-four seven, it's just the working of the scheduling in itself.
Okay, and then a quick follow up question, with, with twelve officers, assuming we were fully staffed with twelve officers, um, does this allow us to move to some sort of a rotation where there's more than two officers out on patrol at any one time? Would it allow us to put three officers out at some proportion of time over the year above and beyond what we currently do?
Yes, currently with the ten hour shift that we have right now, Officer Edwards isn't in the rotation in itself. So Officer Edwards having the K nine U as a specialty is, he's rotated in as a factor for in case an officer is sick, training, I, I'm even look place K nine, uh, Officer Edwards in that position. And not only that, allowing that he overlaps both shifts from the day shift to the night shift and still allowing uh, the K nine officer to have off on his days, and then having the required training to keep Paisley certified also.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is, well, I think what the public will appreciate hearing is with this addition, we will have true twenty-four seven coverage, and it may provide even more officer coverage on the street on a daily basis.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, any other questions for the Chief before we let him go? Thank you very much for coming.
All right, thank you, have a good night.
You too.
So Lynn, I'll give you a quick overview, we only made one change, and it was to add more to the revenues. So we got Frederick County doesn't put out their budget until April fifteenth, so we can't get our county share taxes number from them until they do. Um, so we got their number in, and it was higher than I had initially put in. So right now, we haven't made any other changes, so we have a surplus of three five thousand. So that's the only change that's been made so far.
And that's in sheriff revenue?
Yes, and county share taxes, four zero six six. Now we're on, we're, we're back on general fund operating, and we're on P T.
Sanitation department. All right, sanitation department expenses.
No, that's later.
We should be on page eight, on the big, the big document. I want everybody to kind of catch up, take a quick glance, and then let me know if you have any questions.
Just back on page seven, we did glance over another public safety item, just to make sure people, what is the cost share to the, um, the contribution to the fire department?
Oh, I, I.
No, no, we got sidetracked on the.
So the contribution to the fire company is ten percent of our previous, what, ten percent of our previous tax rate would be? So the one six six two, not the one six two. So they're not, they, they are not getting ten percent of the increased tax rate. It's the original tax rate, does that make sense?
Yeah, not, you haven't adjusted that potentially for the, for the surplus in the revenue.
The ten percent base on the tax rate at one, uh, point one six six two.
Gotcha, all right. Cool, thank you.
Since it's Carl's fault.
So, yeah.
All right, now we're gonna go back to page seven.
See, that, that's why I don't want to say it.
I, I, I want to say this in, in broad strokes.
Are we back on page seven?
Yes.
Okay.
The fire department's, um, contribution, um, have we thought about capping this number in any way? I mean, this seems to increase as our revenue increases a certain percentage. What, what about capping this to a set value or breaking it into subcomponents for different purposes?
So that is completely up to you guys. Um, the ten percent of the real estate taxes has just been something that previous mayors have, like, one mayor started it, and then the mayors after that just kind of continued. There's nothing written that says that's how much we have to, like, there's no M O U. That, that was just a, a good faith, one mayor said, hey, we're gonna get ten percent of our revenue to the fire company, and then every mayor after that has just kind of kept up with it. Um, if you want to decrease it, you want to increase it, that is one hundred percent up to you guys.
Okay, I think maybe, maybe I'll answer my own question. So if we keep the number the way it is during the course of the budget year, we want to change that, we can modify that, or are we locked into this?
So once you approve it, that's the number. So it's like throughout the year, we, we wouldn't change it. So once it's approved, um, at the main, once the budget is approved at the main council meeting, that's their contribution that we send them.
Okay.
Yeah, if I can jump in for a second, I mean, there are some discussions that are going on with the fire company. And your original question was, is there any thought of capping it? Yes, there is a thought of capping it. However, uh, we're in discussions with the fire company that I, I don't think are, are open discussions.
Gotcha, okay, thank you, man.
And is this paid over the course of the year, or is this just one check sent?
It's one month sum that we sent at the beginning of November.
Okay. Can we now go to page eight?
Uh, yes, we can, since the Chief left already, so we can't question him anymore.
So we should be on sanitation expenses, streets and roads, uh, expenses.
I have, I have some questions and requested additions. It's, it's just a quick question, on, on the fifty-seven oh three, the other operating expenses, um, this is for recycle, it's like we're spending thirteen thousand for new recycling totes. So is that, is that for Carroll County side, or?
Yes, because Frederick County supplies the recycling bins to the Frederick County residents.
And this is something that's direly needed this fiscal year, or?
So we usually order, so there's a minimum, the amount that we have to order, um, so in order for them to ship them to us. Um, and they have, the company that we use have increased their minimum amount. So it used to be a hundred and twelve or a hundred and thirteen, now it's a hundred and eighty. Um, and we usually order new recycling totes every two to three years, and this would just be the year this, we haven't ordered them in three years, so this would usually just be our years.
Okay.
Um, and we, we do that because the, our original recycling totes, when we initially, um, started giving Carroll County residents the recycling totes, they're, I want to say, pretty old, like, ten plus years old. And just for being banged around and whether they get busted and broken and.
Katie, they're almost twenty years old.
Oh, I'm sorry, they were just twenty years.
Okay.
Yeah, I have to follow up on that specifically before you move on to any other one.
Absolutely.
So if a resident, there's breaks, it's old, whatever, do we not charge them for the replacement tote?
So if it, it just never, because a lot of times what happens is, is it's not the residents, it's the trash haulers when they slam them back down. They bust the wheels off or they crack.
Because I've had people tell me that, like, they bought a house and there was no tote, and the town was gonna charge them for it.
Yes.
That it wasn't there.
In that instance, yes, there is a hundred dollar charge for it.
Hundred dollars, so we do recoup some of the money on this thirteen thousand? Little bit, okay.
Yeah, so if someone moves into a new house and that recycling bin isn't there, um, because the previous tenant took it, unfortunately, that tenant would be responsible for just a new one. Um, now, if they're bussed because the hauler slammed it down and they cracked it aside, we're not gonna charge them for that because that was out of there.
Right, okay, thanks.
Would a, real quick, would a resident have to call town hall, request one because there's this damage in order to get one?
Yes.
Okay.
Only Carroll County, Frederick County takes care of Frederick County residents, yeah.
Okay, uh, now I want to ask the council for your consideration. I'm here, I'm a member in the liaison of the Streets and Roads Commission, the Streets and Roads Commission, and I double checked this with the chairperson today. Um, the commission had, uh, has been wanting to do some work on the crosswalks out here on Main Street. So there are three crosswalks, they're thermoplastic crosswalks. The town has an M O U with M dot, and I believe that was in twenty fifteen. And I believe these crosswalks were installed around twenty fifteen, so it's been almost ten years. And so the estimate for the cost of removing those, replacing them with new thermoplastic, so it'd be nice and fresh and new, the estimate from town staff was, with inflation and such, it would be around ten K per crosswalk. So that would be three crosswalks, that would be thirty K. So that is one option to consider thirty K. If that was problematical, I think budgeting at least ten K to do one crosswalk, which would be the one down by the train station, Benview area, because that's the area that's most in question right now about being a safe crosswalk because of the liquidity, L Works, traffic, and such. If thirty thousand was a bridge too far, perhaps ten to fifteen thousand would be an allowance to do one crosswalk in this fiscal year. So that, that is the ask from Streets and Roads.
My, I, okay, I just wanted to try, I didn't want to interrupt you. Two questions here regarding, I'm not, I'm just trying to figure out, first off, where would the, say if we scaled it back to ten K or whatever, where would that money come from? Where would you?
We'd have to.
Okay, okay, you just don't have, okay, I, that's why I wanted to clarify.
I can, I can find you the money as we go through this.
Not yet.
It gets into wants versus need.
Yeah.
Possession.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm, I get that, I just wasn't making, I wanted to make sure if you have like a, just general idea, it sounds like you made already. But with the M O U with the state, are we responsible for upkeep of the crosswalks and things, okay?
Yeah, they installed them with the agreement that we maintained.
Okay, you said three crosswalks, Councilman, where's, oh, is that, I guess that one, the one down there and?
Right, if we did, if we did them all, it would be thirty K, I think was a good estimate.
No, no, yeah.
It was an estimate.
Estimate.
We didn't get prices.
Yeah.
No, I was just having trouble visualizing the, the three crosswalks. But then, as soon as I started talking about it, okay, I clicked where the three that you were referencing along Main, Main Street.
If you had, if you were asking me, well, Councilman DeMoto, what would you prioritize? I prioritize the one down by the, um, train station.
What would we, say if we did it, what would we be replacing it? Because right now, as you said, the thermoplast has got the brick, the fake brick, if I remember. What would that be replaced with? Would it just be the standard white line crossing or?
I'll, I'll give it, I did a little research, I think the thermoplastic, and then there's another epoxy kind of a treatment. They're both generally the same price, and they both generally last the same amount of time. They're both the ones that last the longest. So it would be the same technology, and I'll defer to the town staff.
At the time, we created a standard for the downtown.
Yeah.
Um, if you want to change that standard, we can go to just the state highway standard or something different.
Now, I'm just trying to picture, the state highway standard would just be the white lines and stuffs? So the brick is our, say, our standard per se.
For the downtown.
For the downtown, so we, okay, but it served the same purpose as a crosswalk, notify, okay. So it's just a matter of if we did do it, replace it in, in time, or some of that might not fit the downtown look or standard.
Jeff, Tom? I'd be okay with, with doing the one down there, with adding the ten thousand, doing the one down there, let's see how it turns out. And if it, because I don't think they're in horrible shape right now. Uh, but, you know, so we could, we could buy another year on the other two and put in the budget for next year. If we do this one, and it works out good, and we go home.
And the other thing this, this allows us to do is to continue to have conversations, and it may not fly, but there has been talk within the commission about, because of liquidity, wanting to perhaps move, some wanted to add an additional crosswalk, another option is to take the crosswalk that's currently by the train station and move that down closer to L Works. So those are all different options, and this money would allow you to either redo the crosswalk in place, or if it was decided you could move it with, with M dot approval, you could remove the one and, and move it down. So you have a couple of things you can, you can look into. But in a minimum, the base case would be to renew the one by the train station.
I'd say if four out of five of you are agreeable with that, that you tend on voting for the budget, then that would be good.
Yeah, I would think, instead of doing all three at once, let's, let's do the most important one, see how it logs, see how process goes. Do we have any concerns with the M dot having an issue with replacing the crosswalk at all? Is that anything we need to go through them for?
Yeah, if we're changing that, if, if we don't use their standard, which is just the solid bars running, um, in the direction of the travel.
Yeah.
Um, like they did a bunch of long Main Street breaks. Um, you know, if we want to do something different than those two, then we would have to certainly get permission.
I think we certainly coordinate, but since the, the M O U was set up to use the thermoplast, I doubt we think they would reapprove that.
Just, if they gave it the first term, there should be no issue at all in approving it annually.
Right.
Okay.
It, it wasn't experimental, it wasn't one of their standards, so they did it as a experiment.
Okay. So the probability of it getting approved by anybody is pretty low.
Yes, yes, I mean, the agreement says we can.
Okay.
As long as it's the same in time replacement, I'm good with, like, the brick. Too good with the town, I don't want something totally different where it might not fit with the other one, but I'm good with it.
Yeah, now again, that's.
Nine to ten grand.
I'm sorry, that's an estimate.
Yeah, but.
So we, we don't know, but that's, that's an estimate.
I mean, do you feel it's a safe estimate?
Uh, again, last time it was, you know, when you do three of them, it's gonna be less expensive because you're getting the crew out there one time. For three of them, now if you're doing one, it might be more. Last time it was about, I think, people's material was five K, and then the state.
All right, I mean, I'll, I'll clear the council real quick, I'm comfortable with it up to ten thousand. I think if we need to, if it ends up being more, maybe we'll revisit it at a meeting to have it approved. Um, I would say that I'm, I'm good with it, if Councilor Redd is.
I'm good with it, just.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, on behalf of Streets and Roads, thank you.
We're gonna up that twenty-five to thirty-five.
Okay, so are we good with sanitation expenses, so we can move down the road?
Was that?
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're all good with, like, nobody had anything else.
Sorry, it's my first time.
I just want to make sure we agreed to, and now we gotta find the money, the money's coming from. So the mayor, not to say, but since, say, not saying, oh, it's easy to spend, but instead of trying to adjust the lineup, should we just reduce that extra revenue from Frederick County by ten thousand?
Where it ends up is, uh, Katie, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but we just added forty thousand, that's right?
So we're actually, so right now, it'll come up with that.
Yeah, so at the end of the day, you know, there's the amount of money that gets transferred over to the capital side. So it ends up reflecting there. So it, it would be ten thousand less going over to the capital side, we're already forty thousand more, so.
We don't have to, currently, we don't have to find it right now.
We'd have to do any fancy.
Okay, cool, I just wanted to make sure.
All right, so we're good with sanit, the sanitation expenses?
Uh, one other, I'm sorry.
I just had a question about Streets and Roads. What is the due step we pay annually?
That's on the capital.
Oh, you're competitive with the capital side?
Yeah, for the stormwater management.
Oh, okay.
That's on the capital.
Sanitation expenses, are we, are we all good with that?
I just want to bring one thing up, just make a comment on it. I know we've got seventeen scheduled yard waste pickups. Um, it's like the commission was talking about maybe potentially requesting or adding one in March. Uh, just for maybe if, uh, because people start doing things in March and collect debris over March. But I think talking with Katie and stuff, I would like to say, or at least make it, announce it or not, make it out there that if we don't use an emergency pickup money for that, we could potentially use that in March, once we get a better thing, a better feel for it if we use it or not in March. once we get a better thing, a better feel for it if we use it or not in March. Or, they were thinking, just try it maybe and see what happens and go from there. But I thought I would mention it, so.
All right.
I'm good with everything else there, sir.
I just have a question about the, the biannual striping contract, the thirty thousand.
We're, we're gonna, we're gonna finish the sanitation department.
Gotcha.
No, I'm good with sanitation.
All right, well, then that. All right, now we can move down to Streets and Roads and Councilman DeMoto.
So, so Barney, what does that, is that like every, every line and arrow in the town and mountain area? Or is it certain, certain sections that need to be done? What does that cover?
So it's all of the white and yellow lines and select arrows that need to be completed.
So it's pretty much, you go through the whole town and freshen everything up?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so this is where the ten thousand for the additional crosswalk would go? It would go in the maintenance program. So I'm going to increase the twenty-five thousand to thirty-five thousand.
All right, any other questions at all for the Streets and Roads or the rest of the page?
So it's just to clarify, it's the crosswalk at the tree, where you cross over from Benview's over to the tree station, that crosswalk?
Correct.
Okay.
Are you going to put that in the next K? Oh, I'm not used to the high tech of this.
There's a possibility, there's a possibility of it, of it being relocated if they, if they want to export it. That will come to the council table before it's decided on?
What, the relocation?
Yeah, I think we would put it on as a discussion. You come to the question?
Yes.
Well, yeah, there's more, yeah. Hey, Katie, is council, I'm sorry.
I mean, I, I'm watching you. State highway has to be agree.
Oh, of course. Yeah, can you, Councilman Evans mentioned that too, like, can we put all certain note in there? Like, um, some further council discussion of relocation or costs above ten K? With council approval, any increase above ten K?
How like, are you going to put all that, that's just a, but maybe you can worry it out, you're not too worried about it.
Well, it's just good, sometimes it's just good to have it in there if required, if somebody questions it too and you, yeah. All right, we have any, any more questions on Streets and Roads? Steve, tell the Streets and Roads Commission, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you guys have any other questions about the roads? It's kind of like, went back and forth, I just didn't know if there was anything in there that you guys had questions about.
Crosswalk's handled, so we're good. I'm, I'm good.
So now we are on to Parks and Recreation, and I do have a change. So under Parks Enhancement, which is the five one six five three oh five, under amenities, there's three thousand. We can actually zero that out because that was for benches, but we don't need it. We don't need them anymore, Brian has benches down at the public rest program that we can use.
So we're taking it down another?
Yep, so we're going to zero that out.
Now, before we move on to amenities, are there anything, other amenities that could fall under that? That the parks need trash cans, anything else?
Lot of this time.
Okay. Just so we don't have to revisit it later in, in the year, so.
Okay. Open for more questions on, on this page?
Yes.
Fifty-three oh five Park Enhancements, go down the almost signage, information centers, literature. Twenty-five hundred for new park signs and maps, educational information. What does new park signs mean? Does that mean the, you know, the, the really nice formal standardized signs in front of each park? Or what is this?
So the standard signs you see outside of like Watkins or Sun Ridge, those range around ten thousand dollars apiece. So this funds here would be for a map of like Wendy Ridge. A lot of people are going out to Wendy Ridge, they can't tell where, what, how the actual park is laid out. So this is the standardized, our parks can have an entryway map printed on a hundred percent aluminum, recyclable, quick, full color that we can have at each park so people know what to anticipate when they're in the park. Where to go for amenities, et cetera. So that's not the entryway sign, this is just a map sign with information. And some educational, pretty much, like what's in this habit pack, so if you walk.
And then I'm, I'm assuming the, the Parks and Rec Commission is, or are they giving input in terms of prioritizing which, which half to do this year?
Correct.
Thank you.
Council President, one question, since it's Councilman DeMoto's fault now for stopping, I can ask the questions here.
I'll take full responsibility, but not the blame.
Okay. Under fifty-three oh four, the lot, the section involved with maintenance and repair of parks. There was a discussion, someone asked me regarding the new mountain bike trail over in Wendy Ridge. I'm presuming where, once it's all finished and handed over to the town, that we will be taking over the maintenance of that trail also? Is any of that, I mean, maintenance itself would cover all the parks, trail maintenance and things of that nature. So have we looked at what it would cost to do the annual maintenance on that yet? Does this number need to be increased, any of the handle that? And also, have we looked at, uh, I know when I was in the Parks and Rec, there was one, there was a continuing question about the, I want to say the condition of the trail at Watkins, the, the perimeter trail. There were some areas that should be replaced, have we done that or is that in this too?
Are you talking about the walking trail or the walking?
Yeah.
Okay.
The asphalt trail.
So that would most likely cost more than five thousand dollars to.
Do it, yeah.
So that would be on the capital side, but no, it is not.
It's not in the budget, okay, but it doesn't sound like we've looked at any potential maintenance. If it's at, for the mountain bike trail of Wendy Ridge.
Um, no, I don't think, no, it's not included in this, but I'm not sure when.
That, yes. It's a new amenity, we're not sure what it would take on annual maintenance and things of that, okay. All right, so we will be, sooner or later, we'll have to do that. I guess same thing with the skate park too, that would fall into maintenance? That we would have to budget for at a later date or for annual fixing?
We did, um, budget a thousand dollars under the enhancements for plantings to kind of fix the erosion of the skate park.
Yeah. I'm talking to, you know, the actual structure. Okay, thank you.
Did I point out something too? I know that the Ellis's and everybody working on that trail is doing all kinds of fundraising still. They're all over Facebook fundraising and we're getting a lot of visitors from out of state, around the state, out of state, coming to that park, so I'm imagining it's affecting our businesses hopefully.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm not knocking.
There's, there's, they're still, they're not done, there's still fundraising to help us.
Yeah, I, I wasn't knocking the facility or the people, I just.
No, I know, I just want you to know, there's, there's still going on strong.
All right, cool, thank you.
So I'll just go ahead and ask the question, do we, taking care of our ballfields? Clearly ballfields are a premium, Winfield's going through a ton of things right now. Um, Watkins Park was just completely redone by a mountain area independent softball program because it needed it. Are we looking at any type of process to where we might focus on a specific field once a year? Whether it's placing dirt, backstops, bases, anything, sheds? You know, do we have a schedule or a process to make sure that our fields are staying up to?
It's, it's up to, we did up to two years ago, we would go out and groom every field and I thought it was inappropriate. It's up to the individual leagues to maintain this field. So what do you think town is in charge of is mowing the grass and ensuring the fences are safe to be around.
Okay.
Beyond that, it's on the, we're giving them free baseball games.
Okay.
They can at least maintain.
Okay, yeah, that's, all right, so then, so basically it's our responsibility as, I guess we would see it for safety purposes, fencing, trash cans and just overall grass mowing.
And then those leagues are graded once a month.
Okay, perfect, all right, thank you.
Sorry, Council President, now, Steve, now, your blame falls to you for making me think and have a question on regarding the park enhancements. I know there's, there was a discussion in the fall regarding the lighting of the softball field over at Watkins. Is that progressing any and we don't have to put any money in the budget for that? Wasn't there discussions of a private dam for lights and stuff, is that progressing?
That's still progressing there in the permanent stage, but yeah, there's going to be no need for funds from the town.
Okay, I just, cool, thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, moving on to page ten. Planning and zoning expenses, take equipment to review and let me know if any questions.
Uh, just a confirmation on something. Um, go down to the last line on the page, the consulting piece at the bottom. This is ten thousand dollars, I'm assuming that can be used for whatever we choose to. It could be used to augment the review of a concept plan for development. Perhaps if we wanted our master plan that we're currently working on, to have an outside peer review of that, we could also use, use the consulting piece for that as well. Does that acter?
The purpose of putting it in there was to hire a consulting company to look at a development plan. In terms of using it to review the master plan, I, I don't think we discussed that. Would that be an issue?
Well, no, but master plan expenses would really come out of the master plan line, I think.
Okay.
Just to keep it clean.
So I think this is more of a development.
So I apologize, I didn't copy over the note, but we kind of kept it in there for the same reason we had in there last year, which was to review development plans related to MXD and MXCC. I just need to copy that.
Okay.
So I would say no on the master plan.
Gotcha, but there's somewhere else, am I missing where the master plan line is?
Directly above it, the eighteen thousand five hundred.
Gotcha.
Fifty fourteen.
Yep, I see it. Okay.
I think most of those expenses are for plantings.
Yeah. Maybe fifteen thousand.
On page eleven for community development, communication events and park admin expenses. Take them into review. Any questions?
Yes. I'm just looking at Aster because I know this is her, this is her value.
I do, it's common.
So downtown revitalization expenses, so just remind me again, we, we have the, the division or the unit within town government that does community outreach and this kind of activity. Then we have the Economic Development Commission. And those two things kind of overlap. So pertaining to things the Economic Development Commission may need support for, where would you say that support is captured? Under the Economic Development Expenses category or this Revitalization category?
That would look to Katie for it. It would be under Economic Development Expenses. The downtown revitalization expenses are going to be for downtown, so Main Street basically. Um, anything outside of that that's necessarily like, um, to the vision mountain area towards that is always under economic development because that's the whole town.
Okay. And then I do have a specific question on downtown revitalization expenses. I looked at previous years, FY two thousand and twenty-two up to two thousand and twenty-five and comparing last year's with this year's, this budget is up fifty-two percent from last year. And so my question is, what, I mean, I look at the second breakout, downtown events and promotions, that's going from ninety-five hundred to eighteen thousand seven hundred. Why, why are we doubling that? Why, why wasn't what we were doing last year enough for the next year?
Because we're increasing programming. So if you look at that last year, we increased in fourth quarter for Mount Scary, which gave us events every single day for a week, which that's an added expense. Um, for the upcoming year, we have holiday decor that's going to be a large ticket item. We're replacing the wreath along Main Street. Those run about five hundred dollars a week between the wreath and the bracket. So that up that line item, um, as well as just regular inflation, cost of events, et cetera. Um, so, and Fourth of July, we're taking on a bigger leadership role, Fourth of July, and doing the American Spirit Parade this year, which we have not done, we did one year as an off, but this is now a reoccurring town event. So we're adding programming, costs are going up, and we're also adding more Christmas there.
How's, how's the rest of the council feel about this budget area?
Just to get on your train of thought here, is it like, were you questioning or wondering about the overall budget total or the, just the Dublin and the downtown events and promotion section?
Well, it's both.
Or just in general, okay.
You're going up fifty-two percent and I see where the money's going.
Okay.
But especially the downtown events and promotion, and that's, you're doubling that and then you're buying new wreaths for downtown, that's, that's.
That's a main, yeah.
Where your money is, those two categories.
Yeah, okay, I just, just so I would, I'm fine with that because even on the downtown events and promotion, if you looked at, say, two thousand and twenty-four, I'll say an odd year, an odd year, it was only ninety-five hundred, but going on the previous two years, it was nineteen thousand and seventeen thousand respectively. We are adding more events downtown and related to Fourth of July and other things that that can draw people downtown and help the businesses down, downtown during some parts of the year that might be slow and things of that. The wreath replacement is probably, they've been around for a while now.
By, by a ten year, it's been the same wreath.
Yeah, that's worth diving a little bit deeper in because Brian's got to put those things together and get them hung up and everything. And, and I know for the last couple of years, we talked about replacing the wreaths and, and then pulled back from it. Uh, but haven't you had to rewire some of those, what are some of the problems you've had with the wreaths?
Correct.
Yeah.
We're bandaging them together.
And how, how many wreaths are out there?
We hang probably over twelve.
Twelve, good, so end of, end of life replacement, in other words. They use their useful life, their past a useful life. So I'm, I'm fine with it because, I mean, at least the ten thousand for next fiscal year, not ten thousand, excuse me, I was reading the wrong line, I'm sorry, it's bad, it's Councilman DeMoto, but the three hundred thousand, I nearly gave us all the heart attack. It was the five thousand, go back down to something else, lower next, next year. Now, I see Katie has her panel.
So I will say, Ashley does really well with getting sponsorships for a lot of her stuff. So, I mean, she has budgeted fifty thousand five hundred in revenues for her stuff that she plans on getting sponsorships for to help offset these costs, so she's really good at that. Costs are down in the main, in the long run. And something I will say, by increasing our programming for downtown, we've looked at Pacer AI, which is cell phone things for foot traffic, and over last year, we're up a hundred and fifty percent for foot traffic coming to Main Street. So by doing these programming changes, adding things, we're increasing the culture that feeds into downtown. We're having a more vibrant Main Street, it's getting a lot of those economic development goals we have. So this is our catalyst point for those. So it goes to invest in that bucket to bring more people to town, so we have that tourism tie.
No, I mean, I, I think it's very important to have a sense of community and community spirit and, and people who live in our town, even if they don't go to all the events, I think, I think they, they like knowing that events are there for the taking if they choose to go to them. And again, a compliment to you, because they're always well-run, well-organized, so I just want to understand, you know, what the addition's for. And then a last quick question, back to Economic Development Commission. So if they needed funds for something, they could look to line fifty-two-ten under, like, advertising promos and marketing, or business, so there's no money for business stuff. But this is where they would, if, if something came up during the year and they needed some reasonable of funding, this is where they would be able to draw from?
Yeah, that's where they work with their staff liaison and we look at what we have in the budget and what would be appropriate line item to hold for that project.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Now on page twelve, for miscellaneous expenses. Any questions?
A question. Five-nine-oh-nine contingency. What does contingency mean?
So this is the mayor's contingency. So if he wants to take, I know in the past, he's taken, like, a council of odd mountains, commission member to lunch to thank them for, if, for serving, um, it would be covered under this line item.
Is that like our pizza line?
Yes. Yeah, it's just a little bit of money for him.
Maybe.
You have four K, man.
Yeah.
Well, this is where the little jigs, like, the retiring commission members come in.
Yeah, maybe contingency might not be the best. Yeah, don't say that, ask for it there. But yeah, but contingency might not be the best.
Petty cash.
Petty cash for better wording for it.
If someone's, uh, has, um, I'm sorry, I forget the term for it. If some, someone passes away, you have to buy flowers. That sort of stuff, does that come out of here, or is it?
We, um, we have that under General Administrative Fund, but, like, both funds. Um, but if you wanted to go above and beyond, like, what our, our normal would be, then you could pull it out. It's discretionary. You kind of can use it for, yes, it's a discretionary fund, yes.
Mayor's allowance. We recall that, yeah, it's just contingency, I know, here. Alright, any further questions on page twelve?
So since, um, we still have surplus, this will actually increase the transfer, um, to the capital budget.
Hey Katie, I just, wait till you, I just have more of a general question related to the operating fund or expenses in general. If we say for some unknown reason, once the budget is passed and we, I want to say, go past what's been appropriated for a particular line, line item in the budget, how is that extra needed cash handled? Is that handled through, like, re-allocation of funds from existing already approved line items within the operating budget? Budget or a draw, drawdown of, uh, reserves for some reason?
Um, so it would all depend on, on the amount.
Okay.
Um, so if you go over one line item, two thousand, but in that same, so parks, so parks enhancements, for some reason, goes over two thousand, but parks maintenance is not, then you would try, you'd try to kind of balance it within the entire department. So if you know for a fact something came in a little bit higher than you were expecting, um, then you would try to balance it within that department.
And if, we've done in the past when this happened, we've kind of, we do have the ability, or it's not unheard of, transferring it between line, different type of these line items.
Yep.
From like parks to streets and roads or something, as long as it's on the operating side.
Yeah, if you know for a fact that something's not gonna move forward, or there is gonna be an extra new line item, you can reallocate it via budget amendment, um, to a, a different department.
But if we do that, it would have to be made up, if, yeah, we would try not to harm, but if it does, we would have to make certain alter, altercations for those existing things.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions?
So our new transfer to capital is two hundred and two thousand, is one dollar.
One dollar? Okay, Kim, someone find it. Alright, move on to page thirteen. Which is the summary for the General Fund Operating Budget, uh, which breaks down both revenue and expenses. Uh, please take a minute to review. And we're gonna go through each line item individually anyway, right?
Uh, so this is just like, kind of a quick snapshot of the operating. So total revenue coming in is seven million four thousand twenty-four dollars, and then our expenses equal that same amount. And then each, just a quick, like, each department, this is how much. So this is just the final total of the breakdown. Yeah. So, um, but yes, we'll go through the capital side, and I'll just let you get them.
Any questions on this breakdown? I just wonder. Now switch to the General Fund for the capital. Page one. Quick review.
So just, just a confirmation question. So, general government, it's XXXX, proceeds from bond issuance. Again, we are, we are making a commitment to get a bond for four point five million dollars in this fiscal year. We're, that's, that's a solid commitment, correct?
Yes, that's our intention, and, uh, town administrator will be overseeing that. And she, the application goes in the fall, correct?
Um, it's actually, we do do August.
August, okay.
It'll be funded and not silver, remember?
Thank you.
Page two. Community Development.
Hey Katie, I just want to make a compliment or a comment, nothing, I'd just like to say thank you for whoever decided to put in the comments section where some of the, um, money comes, comes from the various sources of money.
Oh, the impact fees?
Yeah.
That was the thing.
Okay, thank you. And how much that comes to, thank you.
Any questions from two, or follow up?
Yeah, quick, quick follow up. And, uh, yeah, that's put in the budget, uh, so the council can see that, that, uh, a council member delivered, and I worked pretty hard on, on reassessing the, uh, the impact fees for the town, raising them up to what we thought was an appropriate level. So, so those are noted where those impact fees show up in the budget. And that's what Carl was referring to in that. So appreciate your point on that.
Page three. We're on two now.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions at all now? Katie, any you need to go?
No. Unfortunately, no changes there.
General Government, Capital Projects, Purchases, uh, Regarding Buildings.
I've got a couple questions or comments, um, nothing specific, just wondering out loud. Regarding the lighting upgrades under fifty-nine sixty-three and fifty-nine sixty-five, regarding the LED upgrades for Town Hall and Building Number Two LED lighting, um, are we, or is any of that funded by grants, Barney, do you know? Or would we, would it be advantageous for us to try and seek grant reimbursement for these up, upgrades? If there's, if it's available from M E A? Sorry, Heather, sorry, uh, sorry, Ashley.
But I will say that, um, I think through those, um, installers are getting discounts from, I think it's from Tom Edison.
Gotcha.
So, so there are discounts happening, but grants are a return, actually.
I will actively look for and review any that I see if you find ones that it.
Uh, I would, I don't know where, but check with, um, Maryland Power and Maryland Energy Administration. Um, look at those two websites. I know they have some, at least Energy Administration has some grants. I don't say dedicated, but that could be applied for by municipal gov, governments. And just something with the Building Number Two LED lighting. I'm not sure if, maybe the installers can verify that the LEDs, if we use garage door openers or automatic openers in Building Number Two, that the LED doesn't create interference with the openers if they're for winter time, if the trucks have it, so they can pull up, hit the bus, and the doors go up easily enough without them, the pull ratings. I know I have that with my own garage door opener, just.
Me too.
Uh, yeah, so I, I think it'd be, I don't want to, like, have an upgrade to save money and then cause another, another problem.
No, it would be fine.
Okay.
Okay, I will say we have to increase that eighteen thousand, because we reallocated some of the twelve thousand in the current fiscal year to redo the AC in the elevator room. So we need to add six thousand to that number.
So then the total now is twenty, if I'm adding correctly, twenty-four? Okay. See, now, now I can put the blame on, uh, Katie for my next question. I, they were past this, and Barney can blame Katie. Um, notice the thirty thousand for HVAC replacement in Town Hall. Didn't we replace something a couple of years ago, or something for Town Hall? Is this another unit that we're replacing then?
So Town Hall is eight units.
Okay.
And we've replaced a few of them, but there's more.
Okay. Just end, end of life, okay, cool, thank you.
Yeah, push comes to shove on that thirty thousand, y'all can drag it, the LED lighting.
Oh, no, oh, no, Brian, I wasn't saying that we needed to be dragged.
It's, it's only a backup garage. We're not in that garage like we are our main building. So the lights are not on that often.
Okay, well, no, I got you. No, I was just concerned with, like, if it was an actively used garage, if the garage doors weren't on.
And I mean, the main building, we upgraded more, so we did all four of those.
Okay.
It's very inexpensive.
I'm fine with it if they need to be replaced, and either us do it or someone else to save the town money and environmental responsible. So I'm fine with the up, with the upgrades of the LED lighting.
So, um.
Thank you, there, Brian.
You confused me. So fifty-nine sixty-five, Brian, we don't need that thirty thousand?
I'm just saying, if push comes to shove, I know it's going, I would say, if we do it ourselves, we just borrow LED eight-foot lamps from Home Depot, and they're relatively inexpensive. Wiring's already there. I know it's not gonna be anywhere near a third grand, but I would rather roll that money into going add back, like y'all are going up here. Our wall units are shot. They're nice, they're nice to look at, but they, they don't function.
So you want to modify that number as opposed to eliminating that number? Do you want to?
Well, I mean, I know, I would like to go to a heat pump and regular, like, in-house heat pump and air conditioning unit. They're running about seventy-five hundred, eight thousand installed.
I'm talking about the lighting though.
The lighting, I'm fine with what we have on us.
Well, you want to zero that?
Yeah, that's zero.
But then we can transition those funds to.
Right, so the same, we can.
HVAC. HVAC heat pump, actually, not a window unit, not some.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're efficient for what you have to do. If you don't want to run ductwork and all that stuff, they're great. For old, the wall panel. We're only getting two, three years of service out of them.
Rather than what we use.
So fifty-nine sixty-five goes to zero, is what I'm hearing?
Do we want to leave money in it so they can do an HVAC system?
So you just want to change it?
Yeah, he wants to replace, instead of replacing or doing LED lights, he'd like to do an HVAC system.
If you could put ten grand in for.
Ten.
Yep.
Okay, so ten and for heat.
Not for HVAC.
HVAC slash.
Heat pumps. For whatever, yeah.
Okay, so not lighting, HVAC.
What would, in your estimated cost, what would it cost for you guys to upgrade those LED lights?
I can't remember what we paid for Home Depot. They were the, just regular wired into, like, we just wired them in series.
Because I'm wondering if we, I mean, we take that thirty thousand, it's gonna be cheaper anyway, if we can do a heat pump.
Yeah.
That he wants, and then still get, still get the, the, ourselves to do the LED upgrades as well. We're probably still gonna pull a decent amount of money away from that thirty thousand just by doing the lights.
I would just say, say the overall amount, leave it at thirty. Not for the lighting, but subdivide it into two projects, twenty, ten, ten thousand for the heat pump, and then the remaining for any light replacements. And then we might have a little, say if the HVAC comes in more money than ten thousand, we can pull from the lighting portion of it. Does that make, you following my logic there?
Yeah, Katie's got it, DPW upgrades, so it could be HVAC, it could be heat pump, it could be lighting.
Just use it for whatever.
Yeah, just leave it in and do what she just did, DPW upgrades covers it all. Is that good, Brian?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, what I was looking at, the two hundred dollars for a two-ball eight-foot. We'd probably need three, six, nine, twelve, fifteen, eighteen.
Twenty to thirty.
Twenty-one sets, so you have five bringing in light bulb.
And how much should you say for the heat pump, estimate?
Ten.
Alright, so why don't we reduce it to twenty? You still have a little bit of leeway here and there. And we just recoup the ten thousand dollars that we had for the streets and room.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's good.
I mean, that still gives you a little bit if it goes up, and obviously, if, if your, your numbers are a little off, then, you know, we can, we can supplement for the HVAC or the LED lighting. But I would rather it be as accurate as possible based on what his needs are, not just leaving ten grand in.
Okay. No, I'm, you know, Council President, I'd just like to have that little extra cushion just in case it costs over, overruns instead of having to come back or everything.
Yep. And Brian, just keep us posted on, on that and, yeah, get that stuff in there, if you can. Alright, cool.
Alright, so we're still on page three. Any other questions, concerns?
Uh, yes, I have some, uh, questions about the Flatiron Building budget. Yeah, so just, just a statement, I understand the town has made the commitment to rehabilitate the Flatiron Building, full style. Understand that. But the town got a, a grant or funding from the state of Maryland for a hundred and fifty thousand. And then you've got, just refresh my memory, the twenty thousand from the Historical Society or?
Yeah, it was over twenty.
Okay, so, so.
Two thousand, five thousand from American Legion, uh, couldn't do it. The two hundred and fifty thousand is based on the hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. And then I put a hundred thousand on top of that, which is what we had in last year. And that's basically seed money, money that is there to help Ashley apply for grants and get grants. So that's, that is the hundred and fifty K D H C D grant plus a hundred thousand.
Okay, so some thoughts on this. So you got the hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant money. Can that, can that be used, are there any limitations on what that can be used for? Can that be used on engineering design, paper studies? Does that have to be used on physical improvements to the building? Wha, what are you allowed to do with that money and what timeframe?
The D H C D is for actual physically touching, dealing, working on the building itself.
So can that be used for engineering studies?
Not necessarily, no.
Okay. Two, I'll just put the moose on the table as the expression goes. Um, just because we put a hundred thousand dollars in last year, we didn't use all that hundred thousand dollars. It doesn't mean we need to apply the same amount this year. The second point is, um, you've got two hundred and fifty thousand down, and you're, and you're description as engineering detailed design. There's, there's no way you're gonna need two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for engineer detailed design. Because as we talked about at the last council meeting, really, the first step seems to be taking that pre-concept design for option two, and getting with all the right stakeholders, M dot being the key one, and getting a read on if that option will even work, because that option involves. and getting a read on if that option will even work, cause that option involves relocating the road. Okay, so until you know that, y- y- you don't need to do, be doing a lot more detailed design. So this, I, I, I just don't understand this. In my view, um, you've got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the state, you've got this other money. That's enough money for you over the next year to advance the Flatiron Building. You don't need any additional money, certainly not an additional hundred thousand dollars.
Well, um, Ashley, the DHCD grant, can that money be used as part of a match of another grant?
The ones that got state funds. So that grant has to be matched either by the town or by private investment. And there's another grant that we haven't been awarded, but could be a possibility, a high possibility, but we have to match that, which would be a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
So the hundred thousand in there makes us eligible for a grant that we have pending.
Yeah.
And if we don't receive it, you don't use it. But if you do receive it, then it doubles your, your funds. Cause you, you have to have the town match. And we have to show that in the budget to show that we are contributing towards that project. So just, but that again, we don't have it in yet, but in order to fly, this is an exception I have to ask.
Well, my concern is, just as, just as I heard from the mayor, well, we put a hundred thousand in last year, so we're gonna do that this year. I look at this two hundred and fifty thousand dollar line item here. And if I make an assessment and say it's gonna take that project ten years to complete and you keep coming back and putting in two hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year, that's essentially a sixty-two point five percent town contribution to that building. You're basically building in a fifty percent spending on that building. And I think that's too much for the town to be contributing to that project, given our budgetary constraints. And my belief that safety, security and infrastructure should be prioritized as needs. And this project is more of the wants, so I, I'm not happy with putting an extra hundred thousand dollars in there. And if you need to show matching, why can't you just, we have money in reserves that can be used as matching funds.
I'm not over this line item, I'm just telling you.
Okay, but I'm just saying, I, I don't know that you need to, I know you need to be able to show you could match, but you've, you've got money in reserves. You can say, we have the money to match to get, so we get a grant.
Yeah, I absolutely respect your opinion on it, but I would, I mean, there, there's five of you sitting at the table. And if four of you are okay with it, then, I mean, I would respect your opinion, but, but move on. Uh, so if, I don't know how the rest of the council feels about it, but I, I'm very comfortable with that number. I think it needs to be in there. I think it does, it, it's our building. We have a responsibility to, to, to move on it. And I don't think what I have put on top of the grant that we have is, is unreasonable, so.
Well, and my concern is exactly what Ashley said. If we take that money out, we don't show that we have that money to match for the grants that we're applying for. So I think it's better to have it in there, as Mayor said in the past, a placeholder, so that we have a better chance of getting some of these grants, cause we're starting to roll on grants. And I hate to, as much as, by the way, thank you, hard work you've been putting in non-stop. I don't think people have any idea what you guys do in town hall. Thank you for doing that, because I'd hate to put a brick wall stop to all the work you're doing by taking that out. So I agree, it needs to be in there for that placeholder.
I'll agree with Councilwoman Gillette that it is a placeholder. And a hundred thousand could not, not gonna say, may not just be for one grant. That could be a total of five different grants, of smaller grants that it might require a match too. So it's just, it's just not one grant. I respect Councilman Demuth's opinions and thoughts on this matter, but it's also maybe if we take it out, it might harm us from getting five separate grants too. So it's, right, right now it's just a pla- placeholder. And I'm good with leaving it in there. As Ashley indicated, if we don't get a grant, it doesn't get allocated for a particular grant. And do we know how many, I mean, I know we've applied for grants and we've gotten shot down for other, other grants too, so.
Yeah, grants are never guaranteed.
The, yeah, but it's nice to, but if we, if we're required to have a match, it's nice to have something, at least a placeholder in the budget for that. Cause there are some grants that don't require.
Correct.
A, a match too. So I'm fine with leaving it in there as a pla- placeholder for right now. Councilman Rivers?
I'm, I'm actually good with it as a placeholder as well, but, um, you know, what I promised uh, citizens when I was running is we're not gonna give a lot of taxpayers' money to this. So, you know, if this continues to grow, I'm not gonna be okay with it in the future. But the hundred thousand dollar placeholder, which the mayor said would not, would come back to us if you don't use it, then maybe Ashley's gonna have it. I, I'm okay with this particular one, but, you know, I wanna kind of monitor it year over year to make sure that it's not like Councilmember Benardo said, we're not paying for sixty-two percent of the building in the taxpayer money.
Barney, quick question. Is there any chance we use two hundred and fifty thousand dollars into that building this year in the next fiscal year? Borrowing and falling down, and that's not gonna do it.
Might need a conversation with, uh, the mayor first.
I mean, thank you, just, in, in my opinion, again, it's my first year.
Three and a half million dollar project.
Slow moving, you know.
From what we're seeing. Um, and if you wanna do a detailed design, get everything ready and then create, uh, you know, a timeline, state, you know, break it down the stages. Uh, but have all your design up front, so you have everything that you need, that, that during that process, we would get, say, are we approval and other approvals? Um, absolutely, we can spend that, uh, because it's gonna, that's only like six percent. And, uh, you know, between six and ten percent of the design.
So I guess my concern would be, are we, are we saying right now that the extra hundred thousand on top is not for that? That extra hundred thousand on top is to only match grants if the grants are approved? I guess because what I'm wondering is if we end up going down that road and we do spend the two hundred and fifty and then we do get a grant and now we have to put another hundred thousand in to match it, is that what we're thinking? Or are we gonna earmark that a hundred thousand of the two fifty for grant purposes, only matching, you know, town funds with the grant funds? Meaning we basically have a hundred and fifty thousand of grant money now to utilize this fiscal year with a hundred thousand to utilize depending on how the future grants come in? I mean, is that fair to say? I, I'm just trying to wonder how that money's gonna be utilized?
Well, I hear what you're saying. And there's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of things, things that have to move into place, uh, over the next fiscal year.
Yeah.
Um, the hundred thousand is meant there, meant to be there as, as seed money for any additional grants. Uh, if we end up with a hundred thousand dollar matching grant, then this money would be the match for that.
Okay.
So in that case, we'd be getting fifty cents on the dollar. I think that's, personally, I think that's reasonable.
Okay, so with that hundred thousand being earmarked for potential grants only, and we're saying we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in working capital to move forward on the process, which has been fully funded by grants. That makes it a little easier to, basically, we're, we're putting a hundred thousand in just for the potential of doubling it. If we don't double that money, then that hundred thousand's not being spent.
I have a quick clarification. My interpretation, what Ashley says is that grant is not for engineering. That means you don't have any grant money to offset the hundred fifty thousand. So you'd be spending a hundred fifty thousand in taxpayer money unless a new grant came along specifically for that purpose. So you keep saying this hundred thousand extra. Actually, you don't have a hundred thousand extra in your hand.
Yeah, because, I was gonna get back to that. It, then, then we, to me, you cannot say two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and next to that engineering detailed design, because we were told we couldn't use that grant money for paper studies and design. So that's incorrect.
Well, Ashley, are you, are you sure about that? Cause I thought the DHCD grant.
At this very moment, no. I have gone over the subject matter so much that I cannot recall exactly, but I can pull it and get it to council.
Yeah, we're gonna have to pull the DHCD grant.
It's getting here.
Cause I thought it could be, uh, used for reimbursing the architectural assessment.
It was a street, the, uh, strategic demolition.
Yeah.
For DHCD. So I can pull that.
Okay, so we're gonna have to get clarification.
And at a minimum, I, I think we ought to say, if you're gonna add a hundred K, for that one hundred K, you ought to say, if no grants are received in the fiscal year, that money goes back to the general capital fund or whatever, correct? I'd, I'd like to see that stipulated.
I don't know. I'm not over this, I'm just.
Well, I, I'd be okay with the note that said a one hundred thousand of this line is designated for matching grants.
And, and of, absent any grants, it returns back to the general fund.
Well, that happens naturally, so.
Yeah, but I know when we don't spend it, it's, it's not spent.
But we're also gonna continue to go after grants in every cycle since the town doesn't wanna pay for this. And this is gonna be something you're gonna have to press again and again.
I understand.
It's not just.
Which, which the previous council did vow to do, so, and again, as, as long as we're doing it, I, and I'm happy to do it, as long as we're doing it responsibly, you know.
I'm gonna make a suggestion, but I don't think it would be, the way we do it normally is like any leftover just gets rolled over into this line item for the next year. Totally can't go above a certain amount, but I don't think that we can do that, can we?
I don't know if we, yeah, we can compound.
Yeah, not compound, but just say, if, if the mayor, or for some, this mayor or future mayor says, okay, I'm just gonna spend a hundred thousand, I'm just pulling out the number, if we got fifty thousand leftovers from unspent funds from this current fiscal year, we just roll over that fifty and just add a fifty to it to make it an even hundred. But I don't think we can do that now.
And we're not.
No, no, I'm just saying if, if we wanted something of that nature as a, as a thought, but I don't believe we can. That's it. I'm done, I'm.
So are we gonna wait for a follow-up from Ashley just to confirm what that?
I can bring that to the council table, um, in May. So, and we could have that answer then. Um, I, I could ship it to you earlier, but the public wants it. Still, we're sitting at the council.
Okay, so let me just get my brain wrapped. So the strategic, so we're waiting for confirmation or whatever from something for the DHCD strategic demolition grant to see if it can be, if it's allowed to be used for engineering detailed design? Okay. And if it can't, we're just re-al, not re-al, changing the wording in the comment section then? Or what, okay, we don't know.
We'll put that there, so.
Okay, no, I, okay, no, I'm, I'm just trying to figure it out.
What do you have to say?
In a current fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-four, the council approved a certain amount for a matching grant or for detailed design or? I, I need a refresher, I'm sorry. So the current hundred thousand in this year just says engineering. I'm pretty sure, and I don't wanna speak, cause I don't know a hundred per, like, I'm, I'm pretty sure, but I'm not a hundred percent. The DHCD grant, would it cover the concept designs? I'm pretty sure it would cover the detailed designs once you chose the direction you wanted to go. Um, again, Ashley can look at the paperwork and, and.
That's, that's what we need to.
But I, so I think that's why we put detailed designs, because, I mean, technically, we got some designs. Yeah, so I think that's why we added that, like, engineering detail.
And because of the, we received a grant from the Maryland Historical Trust of ten thousand dollars.
That would pay for the concept.
Preservation Maryland.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Um, as well as the donations from the Historical Society and Rotary Club. Are, is, are, are all those funds going towards the design so far?
Some of the donations we've gotten were for last year, and so those went towards the.
Structural assessment.
Structural assessment. So, so this, in the current year, it's the ten thousand from Preservation Maryland and the ten thousand from, um, the Historical Society that are going for, are going towards the concept.
So there was a general consensus that they adopted fiscal year twenty twenty-four to allow up to a hundred thousand of dollars to be sent onto the engineering design. Uh, am I correct or no?
Not to.
No, no, I.
No, I don't know for sure, but I've got DHCD's website up here, Strategic Demolition Eligible Projects. One of the eligible projects is construction level architectural and engineering designs.
Okay, is that.
So if we're talk, if we're talking about the detailed engineering design, the DHCD money should be eligible to be used for.
Okay, we can clarify that.
Yeah, once we okay a final plan or plan, that DHCD money from that strategic demolition can be used for to pay for the detailed plans.
So is, is the thought for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five that we wouldn't wanna spend over the total hundred? That was in the approved budget at the, the first kind of get-go of fiscal year twenty twenty-four, or does not add another?
Well, again, my understanding is you, you budgeted for something and if you don't spend the, that total amount, the remaining goes back in the kitty and then you reassess.
Right. So if we didn't, and it's kinda hard to do in May, but if we hadn't touched any of that hundred thousand, would there be a comfort level to make sure that the more than the originally agreed upon hundred thousand um, would be approved in the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget? Is your concern that with like just putting in like a hundred thousand and a hundred thousand and a hundred thousand? Or just not wanting to go over the original hundred thousand from the fiscal year twenty twenty-four?
My, my concern is that, you know, you, you're saying you need to park money here to show that you can match some grants.
Sure, I understand.
And I, you know, I don't know what the budget rule is, but I don't like that. I'd rather just say, we can match any grant we get. We, we have it over in this other pocket of money called reserves. We don't have to call it out here. I, I just think this is a way to, you know, I understand, you're, you're trying to put as, as much resources in here as possible. And then what happens is that becomes the benchmark and every year you ask for that same amount. And if you were on track to do that, you're gonna cost the town sixty-two point five percent to pay for that building. That's my concern. I have a question for Barney that's very relevant. So I remember back, remember back when we, and you gave us a memo and it was, it was to approve the concept level design. And I think it was like forty-five thousand dollars for that. But then it was brought out through my questioning and others. It was, it was a three-phase design. There was, there was concept and then there was something else called, what, full design? There were two other components. And what was sold to me was, that would be the total package of design costs. And I don't remember that memo for the second step costing two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Can you refresh my memory on what that was? Because.
I don't have that amount in front of me, but, um, I know it was missing pieces to it.
It was missing pieces to it.
From, from that total, the civil engineering was not included in it. Um, and that's a fairly significant chunk of the, uh, design.
Okay, so, if you allow me one more minute, Council President, guys, I wanna see a plan that shows what money has been spent so far, what's projected to be spent, what the phases are and what they're gonna cost, because we were presented a memo that laid out three phases of design. Concept, full design and something else. And I don't think all three. And I don't think all three of them cost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars combined. So, what I'm hearing here is uncertainty in this project. I wanna know as much as possible about where we're headed with this project. That's all I'll say. Thank you.
So where are we getting this right now? I mean, the, the previous council did approve, and there's three of them sitting here, did approve a hundred thousand dollars in that.
For engineering, and of that hundred thousand, we had spent eighty-one point four six. Though, and that was your concept design, so.
And I think that memo that broke it down into three, three phases said that the concept design, we were gonna spend forty thousand, forty-five thousand dollars paid to the contractor to do that. I'll go look for the memo myself, but if you could perhaps see if you could run it. And for the record, part of my concern, I was, I was the council member last year that did not approve the budget. I voted against it because I felt there was too much money going to wants and not needs. And this was one of the categories.
Well, I said, in respect to your opinion, I ask the council to keep the two hundred and fifty thousand in there.
So, I'm. Understand.
I mean, listen, obviously, all their concerns, I know, Council Secretary Deli, under, and that, and so, arguing with this year, with the thought that we could double our money and basically pay fifty cents on the dollar, I'm, I'm comfortable with it. Um, I would say that it's, it's not going to be a benchmark. I, I agree with Council Number Evans. Um, and I would highly suggest utilizing the hundred and fifty thousand in grant money, leaving the hundred thousand in that fund, just in case we do get these grants approved, which hopefully we do, and then we can match them, and then we come back with even more money. So I would, with that stipulation, I would be, okay, okay. Because if we're not, we're not spending it, we're there, we're leaving it there. Okay. Any other questions or concerns on page three?
I, I just wanna clarify one thing. If we do get a matching grant, we do have to spend that hundred thousand.
Oh, yes. No, that's what I'm. It's, it's there, yes, no, it's, it's there for us. And I, no, and I, and that's, that's one thing. I would want us to utilize that to, to be able to double our money and, and pay fifty cents on the dollar.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
We're holding a hundred, we'll get twenty or two hundred.
Right.
And if we don't, then it's still gonna be there. Okay. All right. Any other questions on page three? Do you want to?
We already did publicly, so we can drive.
Nobody has questions, we'll do that.
Well, we've got here.
They were already answered.
I don't have any more, I'll be at that.
All right, streets and roads. First thing, for the annual reconstruction paving project, um, this is already updated for the adjustment with prospect?
Uh, yes, so originally, the number Barney had put in was four hundred and fifty thousand, and then there were some discussions about the paving and everything, and so they increased it to six hundred to make up the difference for what were additional things we're doing this year. And so we'll still do the things that we were planning to do.
Okay, so nobody's being pushed aside or pushed back, okay, so we're still.
And our paving budget always kind of go, like, kind of leads into one year. Like, we don't, I mean, you can't pave when it's pulled out, so we don't really start paving until May, June anyways. And then we just go right into the next year.
Council President, I have some questions here, just for observations, maybe with questions. Under the following streets and roads lineup, so fifty-nine, forty-one, forty-two, and I know it looks like forty-three says as needed. So the previous two ones, they are like on an as-needed basis too, right? The repair for the handicap ramps and things of that nature. And the forty thousand, the storm drainage improvements, are those, they're not mandated? They're just more of a, have them as placeholders and, and they're all, all sort of, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We, we know we have storm drain improvements to do.
Yeah.
And then, and. There's, there's some sidewalks that we need to replace.
So they're placeholders, we're not spending maybe all that. And also, one, the Center Street improvements, which has been carried every year after year after year, that's also a bond that we received from the state too, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
A follow-up question.
Oh, and then, according to Dick, fifty-nine, forty-four, I think that's what he was requesting, wondering about the stormwater. The annual upgrade, no, that's not mine.
It's the following line item in fifty-nine, it's on the next page.
Okay, gotcha, never mind. And that's also kind of like a placeholder, or do we have specific bonds in mind for replacement?
For the stormwater?
Yeah.
Um, that's, we get letters from the county of things that have to be done.
It can.
That's based on some of those repairs.
All right. That's it, Council President, thank you.
Yeah, a follow-up on the Center Street improvements. Remind me again that five hundred K, what's the sunset date on that? That if we don't use it, it goes away?
Twenty-twenty-seven.
Twenty-twenty-seven.
Is that the state fiscal or calendar year, do you know?
I have it.
Somewhere.
Where. At this very moment, it's in a file. I haven't got it, but I do know it's twenty-twenty-seven.
Yeah, no, I, it's just, I just wanna get on board with the same.
I feel like, I feel like that is a fiscal.
A fiscal, so that's state, I think we're twenty-five, twenty-six. Yeah, that's, if it's fiscal, it's next, next frame is when they start planning for twenty-twenty-seven fiscal.
Yeah, because I mean, you're.
Yeah, the state's kind of different and weird. I just wanna make sure we are on the same page for the, for the timing of it.
And then, and then a last question, and it's inappropriate to say it's inappropriate, but. So if, if the Beck property development were to be approved, they, they would be connecting Center Street. So this five hundred thousand dollars is no longer available to us? Is it, what does this mean?
I don't know the answer to that.
Well, I think it's something that we would work with the developer.
For the state.
Be able to utilize to everybody's benefit.
That's, that's what I think too. I, I don't think we have to discuss that in the closed meeting. I, I would say that we've, we've already approached the, any developer who lets it do a land up there and said, we have, you know, a half million to put toward this. That maybe provides us something.
Not to get too deep, I think what it was, that it was earmarked whatever for, this land acquisition and design, I believe. So there are some conditions, so, but not to get into discussions that can't be made both. But yeah, there are certain conditions on that, that, for that.
Okay, thank you.
For the sidewalk curb gutter project, et cetera, how do we go about, is there a rotation as far as what neighborhoods get looked at at certain fiscal years?
So, again, this is for towns' sidewalks, like, you know, maybe for our storm ponds or things like that. All the, all the homeowners, all property owners are responsible for their sidewalks.
Okay.
So we don't, we're not necessarily going for a neighborhood and.
Good to know. I got seven emails from people in Nottingham saying that their sidewalks are falling in. So I'll, I'll ask. All right, so they're responsible for. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Just, just on that note, we had discussed this in the past with town staff, but I think it was done many years ago. But if the town chose to, the town could create some sort of a program where we say, hey, property owners, you know, this is your responsibility, but we have a grant program where the town will contribute X amount, and you only have to contribute, maybe it's a fifty-fifty share or some percentage share. Like, if we really wanted to address some really bad sidewalk issues, that's one way to do it. The other way to do it is to fully enforce the code, and maybe uncomfortable, but fully enforce the code to those homeowners that are not maintaining their sidewalks, and it's a safety issue, they, they need to, they need to do code enforcement on that. That's the comment.
All right, we'll move on to page six.
This is where, at the very top, the mandated stormwater arrangement comes from.
I'm just curious, because it's not a capital project.
It gets tied to the capital project.
Do you appreciate?
So the la, um.
I mean, it's not appreciable.
Yeah, but it goes, because it helps with those mandate, like, the state mandated ones, because they help us with those, so they get attached to the next big project. So the last couple got attached to, like, the storm ready.
I just suggest, I asked you.
That's what they.
Looks are already in the next, I'm just asking you a challenge about that, because it's kind of a.
I can't.
Funny decision, whether you build capital or not, because you're gonna say it's not an appreciable asset.
Council President, I've got one question, just more of a general question for Brian, more so than anything else, just so, I don't ask questions throughout the rest of this. Because I noticed that trucks and vehicles, bucket truck, pickup trucks, we have zero allotted for that. Are we, are the conditions of the trucks good enough where we can, and it doesn't mess up with our replacement cycle of vehicles or trucks?
Yeah, I made the decision because it's been three years since we've had a plow.
Okay.
I've extended all the truck plows out.
Okay.
Pounds what destroys our trucks.
Okay, so the trucks are good because of the lack of plow on, okay. I just also wanted to make sure that we're not shooting ourselves in the foot, because I know the turn, well, the turnaround times for pickup trucks or have been extremely long lately. I just wanna make sure that if we needed one next fiscal year, we're not, we weren't, would it be beneficial or would it now to get it for next year?
Believe it or not, Ford's gotten much easier. Because we're, nobody's buying a single cab anymore.
Yeah, true.
We're one of the only townships anymore that still buys a single cab.
Or a class of system.
Yeah, everybody's buying extended cabs. So it's pretty relatively easier now. Their, Ford's actually caught back up to find a single cab, like.
Okay.
That can fit.
And this goes for the mowers too, and all the parts and equipment? We're doing on all the lawnmowers, all good shape, so that?
Yeah, four Z motors too, and three Yondeers, we've got plenty of them.
But, I mean, they, they should survive another place cycle, all, okay. All right, cool, thank you.
So, just to clarify, he didn't, he doesn't have a truck on the general fund side? It's on the water soon. Not for next year, but the past couple of years, they've been on the water super side. We have been getting new trucks.
Okay, yeah, okay, no, I just wanna make sure that, as I indicated, was it more of the timing that we needed something for, say, next fall or next winter? We're not, if it was extended delivery time, that we were making accommodations to get it before we truly needed it.
Good to go.
It sounds like we're good. Thank you, Brian.
I have one question about line item five-nine-four-nine for the roundabout. Uh, it looks like last year we were gonna put in one point three-three-eight, this year it's one point six. I know it was supposed to be completed last year. Was the full completion basically supposed to cost one point three-three-eight? And because it wasn't completed, now it's going to the market?
I can answer.
You can answer, go ahead.
So when we were putting the budget together last year, we were hoping we would be further along in the process, and we weren't. And so we didn't spend as much in fiscal year twenty-three that we thought we would. Um, and it's still the same issue. Um, a budget amendment, you know, the budget amendments at the end of the year that take all this money. A lot of this money is gonna come out because we haven't really moved forward with this project.
Okay, so, I mean, I, I know that initially, and I confirmed with Council, Council Secretary Deli, the roundabout's gonna be funded fully by ARCA. When, when it was proposed, now we are.
Well, I think we have one and a half million towards it.
Yes, and it's supposed to be one and a half million, which would cover the actual construction of it.
Okay.
But it wouldn't, it wasn't gonna cover a little bit of engineering. I don't understand the engineering design part of it, but it would cover that, it covered the actual construction.
That's where the other four hundred come from.
And I think the one three-three-eight was prior to bids, receiving bids.
Okay.
I think it came in higher.
Okay.
Offhand, I don't know the exact.
Okay, my only concern was, clearly, the last council meeting, we went over AMT's lack of being able to fulfill what they were doing, and I wanted to make sure that inflation hasn't cost the town more money because they could not fulfill the timing there. So that, what we're saying is that did not happen.
It's just the, the, the way, when we're doing our budget and when we pull stuff out, it sometimes doesn't align.
Yeah, no, that's fine, okay.
Can I ask you a question, something I just caught you said? Because I thought we did have one point five million, but now we're saying one point two-five million without.
Because we spent, we spent a hundred and twenty-five last year, we spent around a hundred and thirty this year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very cool, thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, officers? All right, Parks and Recreation. Let's take a minute to review, if anyone has any questions?
Question, when you're ready. What? Uh, the last item, Prospect Park, at the bottom, fifty-nine-seventy-three, it says we're gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars to do a quote-unquote upgrade design. I'd like to know more about what that means. And then you're saying next, next year, we're gonna, we're gonna ask for nine hundred K to redo Prospect Park. And is this, is Prospect Park and Dyre need of these improvements? And was this recommended by the Parks and Rec Commission? Tell me the story on this item.
So Prospect Park, we met with, um, uh.
Mike.
Mike Regal, Brian, um, like, a year ago. I don't remember when exactly, but we talked about things that we could do. Um, and today, we just haven't got started, but we're getting ready to get started on it. But, um, other things come up as priorities, so. Um, it's something I don't think we're gonna spend this year's money fully. Um, and, you know, it's just throwing a number out there, what we might need for next year.
I think I can answer part of that question, because based on Parks and Rec's discussion, and adding to what Barney just said, this park does need, it does need upgrading. Did we replace the roof of the pavilion?
Several years back, yes.
Several years back, yes.
Um, it does need upgrading, it does need improvements, and I know they've been talking about this for a couple of years, at Parks and Rec. So it's just kind of something that's been pushed down.
Yeah.
To answer your question, they have been talking about it for a couple of years.
And, and the addition of a restroom facility.
Right, like lot things.
Things that you want to do.
And really upgrading, because that back basketball court that's a pickleball court, most people don't even know it's there. So it was also right, Ashley, to get accessibility back to those back courts also, because it's a whole nother amenity that could be used if we had better visibility and access to it.
If I remember correctly, that's about one of the older parks in town that's never really been upgraded or touched in the past ten, fifteen years, and it's showing its age. And there were some concerns, I mean, it's been well, well-maintained, but the pavilion could be upgraded. There are some upgraded features and that could be done, whether to make it a much more usable and suitable park for the town and the needs of the park.
I mean, I've just looked at the age of the park, the plate clearing is coming to its age.
Yeah.
And if you're gonna replace it, I, I seriously wanna move out of that pond.
Yeah.
So if you're gonna do all that work, redesign your park to make it much more user-friendly.
Yeah. And the, I wanna say the, I wanna say the dam burn wall's still good, because I know there was some concerns a couple of years ago about the stability of that and the drain pipe and stuff.
Well, it's an unusual system how we drain that pond, and it's, that corrugated pipe is thirty-plus years old.
Yeah, so that needs to be done. I know the state's looking more and more at the, um, I wanna say the safety of the dams and the lakes that are like that, so.
Yeah, I mean, the head wall is perfect.
Thank you, the head wall.
Yeah, the head wall's fine, it's just how we drain that pond is coming to a shelf life. The pond needs dredge. I mean, we can gain a lot more depth out of that pond. The deeper it is, the less algae, the cleaner the water. So, I mean, dredging the pond by itself was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah. So, it's more than the hundred thousand for the design, it's okay with me. So that's probably what it's gonna cost. And then, otherwise, for park improvements and stuff, we can see funding through program of open space money on the Frederick County side and the state and things of that nature, so. I'm okay with it, even the hundred thousand, we could see P O S money if need be for the design.
Any other question? Take a minute to review. I do have one quick thing regarding line item fifty-nine eighty-one, which means baseball field. Um, you know, I asked about upkeep for the fields, um, as far as a, not an overall daily maintenance concern, but just a overall upkeep concern as far as fill dirt, um, you know, just usable. Um, and talks with the baseball commissioner, uh, that was allocated that field this year. Um, base pass is sitting pretty low, it's in pretty dire need of dirt. Um, and when the base passes it low, you have to cancel a lot of games, which we normally have to cancel. And it, it makes it very difficult to get games in. While I understand the, the overall day-to-day outside of grass cutting, grooming of the field should absolutely be done by the volunteers at MAA or at Fort County or whoever they're allocated to by the Parks and Rec Department, to ask a five oh one C three nonprofit that possibly was only allocated that field for that one season, to dump an amount of dirt in it that's going to uphold that field for the next three to four to five years, I don't think is fair. Um, you know, I obviously am a little personal to this too, because I run, you know, I run a program, so, but these specific five oh one C threes are not guaranteed these fields year after year. Therefore, I do not believe that they should have to pay on top of their parents paying county taxes, which most of them do. Then you have to pay again, which is gonna pull money away from new equipment, see, you know, upgraded equipment, uniforms, et cetera, to dump in dirt to use for possibly only one year, and then another program that might get it allocated next year is gonna not have to do anything.
Can I jump in, Brian? I wanna ask you a question because I wanna go back years, like when Twin Ridge first came and, and basically Frederick County gave it to us as the town, because it's a Frederick County school. We were putting dirt in there, right? Because the school programs use the fields. It's not just the sports using the field. So have we put dirt in there on the baseball fields, haven't we? I mean, we would have had to in the first ten years or so, right?
No, I mean, when MAA ran it, they had a travel program there for quite a while, and the travel program paid to do it, put the dirt on the field. They had a surplus pile at the back left corner. That's now gone. Um, we have been putting dirt just for water, to keep water off the fields. We dumped four tons on Twin Ridge last year, we rebuilt all the pitcher's mounds. Uh, we took three dump truckloads down east-west around Oakley, picked that back up and rebuilt the pitcher's mound. And it was, it was just to the point of the, the people using the field was not reading up after themselves. So the next coach shows up, pitcher's mound's two inches low. When he's done, it's four inches low.
Yeah.
And I'm getting a call two weeks later where we got a big hole. Well, you know, you have to do maintenance on the fields after each baseball game. You have to leave it, then you find it. And so this year, MAA came in, they put all of their own dirt over on that field, they opened it all up. I asked her if she wanted us to do anything there and it was, we were good. I talked to a Fort County guy. I believe the only field they have full time is east-west. And honestly, I don't know who has Twin Ridge now. I don't know who is using that.
Basically, kids that live in this town, you know, whether it's one organization or the other. Um, okay. I, I mean, I thought so, because we'd gotten that POS money years ago to put those dugouts in, right?
That's correct.
Do we, can we get POS money for things like dirt, or is it really just for capital things like the dugouts and?
I, I don't know. I'd have to go through actually, but I mean, if I need a load of dirt, I just call Pennsylvania and they bring it down.
So they get the load of dirt, basically, you guys are, make sure, I thought, because those are our two lowest lying fields typically, aren't they? That the town maintains, east-west and Twin Ridge.
They have the work run on, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Water runs down problems.
All right, thanks.
Twin Ridge, correctly from, are we talking about the town owned field over there or the county? Because I know they, when we got the field over there, got kinda
Twin Ridge Elementary School.
Who owns what over there?
Town owns all the ball fields in the front of the school and in the back of the school, and that was given to us by Frederick County as part of the agreement of building Twin Ridge Elementary School. So those are giving me.
Here, some of the fields over there.
Brian.
They, they just resurveyed that two years ago. The town and mountain area property, we owned D, the baseball field in the middle and the lower field that they have recreation on every day for school.
The schools use one field, that's.
Hold on, Carl, go ahead, Brian.
Those two fields, the town owns property, we mow them, we maintain them. Frederick County for that school has authorized us after three o'clock to be in charge of scheduling all of the field, our field usage. But we don't mow it, we don't do anything. The upper two, there is two super old fields that are on the top. Fort County brought in, they dug out six inches and put baseball dirt in all of it. For the past two years, we've been going up weed killing it and road itilling it to open it back up for them just for the little guys. And then they work it out with soccer, so soccer's there on Sunday, baseball Saturday, or soccer Saturday.
Yeah, that one we always called the soccer field, that had the diamonds that weren't being used. So the upper soccer, and what about the front soccer?
That is under our direction for administering new use. That's it. We don't mow it, we don't maintain it. We have nothing to do with it except they can go through tax league to get the rights to that field.
To reserve it through Parks and Rec.
That just wanted, we end up maintaining something over there. I just want to make sure we're maintaining what we own and not.
I mean, Brian's got a handle on it, he almost has. You've been maintaining those fields for how many years, since they built, right?
Yeah, I just don't want.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, I just don't wanna be spending money on the county, but I don't wanna be maintaining something that the county is required to maintain. That's it. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you there, councilman Letty.
Oh, it's okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Brian.
Yeah, and as far as the baseball, um, I mean, that's up to the town fathers. If the town fathers dictate for me to take a more active role in maintaining fields, that's my job. I'll do whatever they tell me to do.
Yeah, I don't know if it's, it's a more active role, it's just a matter of, you know, if, if they, if it needs dirt or whatever, you know. The conversation was had before, was it's, it's on them to do it, they, we just know it, they handle everything else. The problem with that is you might come into it one year where you just handled everything, and then you go to a Parks and Rec meeting and it gets taken away from you. That, that's an issue. I mean, I, you know, it just is what it is. I'm not gonna invest ten thousand dollars of five oh one C three money into a field that you're only granting me use for for three months. And then next year, it might go to somebody else because somebody on the Parks Department or the Parks and Rec Commission decided that's where it should go. That's not, that's not a way to do things. So if that's a process in which we do, the town needs to take ownership to at least have more than, we're just gonna take care of the fences, right? We, we can't ask five oh one C threes to then take care of it if you're not gonna be guaranteed use for them for the life of the time that you're taking care of them.
Best case, or at least offer a pile of dirt there for them to potentially maintain the pitcher's mound.
Yeah, I promise, there's plenty of volunteers in this town, and they're great volunteers, and if there's dirt left there from a dump truck, it's gonna get spread, one hundred percent.
So I'm thinking if it, if it's, if Twin Ridge out of the condition right now, we're in the middle of baseball season, right? If they needed dirt, they could come to Parks and Rec and say, hey, you know, we need a pile of dirt. What does a pile of dirt cost? You know off the top of your head?
Yeah, I mean, it's expensive, because it's.
Five thousand, ten thousand?
I was getting, I think my last load was twenty ton and I paid seventy-five hundred.
So seventy-five hundred dollars. So maybe if it's in bad condition, I mean, that's a good amount to ask, like, say, for example, and I don't know who has what, because I'm not in the arena of who has which fields, I just let Parks and Rec take care of it. Say MAA has that right now. To ask them to put seventy-five hundred dollars of dirt down, I agree, because next year Parks and Rec could go, well, Fort County's getting half of that and you're getting half. So I'm thinking if it's a situation where, as you know, because your kids played on that field, my kids did too, it's a safety issue, so if they're desperate need of dirt, they could come to Parks and Rec and maybe say, we could do a matching program, we'll pay half, could the town pay half? And let Brian get the dirt order, it's probably a much more discount price than they're gonna get, right? So I'd say that's something we could address, don't you think, Mayor?
I mean, we can certainly look at it. You know, I'm not sure where that
Right.
money would come out of the budget if we're not, so.
I think we'll be here.
Yeah.
We probably won't be sure, but again, maybe something next year we have a.
Yeah.
Sorry, that was my one time to extend.
Sorry, you know, I'm gonna jump on that bill down the wagon.
And we'll, and we'll hold you, hold you to that, Council President. All right, page number nine.
Any questions or concerns? All right, here we go.
I, yeah.
Someone speak up. We're on page ten now.
Council President, I just wanted to put out a comment there too, for this on page nine. And to also say thank you for the staff. At least we have looked at or can begin to consider the Windy Ridge bike trail instance, because there is a line, there is a sub-line item in the line item for Windy Ridge, so at least we are beginning to look at, look at that too, so. Or at least we have, have the ability to add some money to it. Are we on page ten now, or something again? I've got one, I do have one question, just more of a clarification question for Katie. And it's under the transfer to reserve for future capital improvements. And it's under the police station reserve. I think I got the answer by just thinking it needs some clarification, because we have three point five million being transferred to reserve for that. Where's that coming from, or what's the source of that funding for that?
So when you get a bond, you have to show the full amount of the bond as your revenue in the year that you get it.
And that's earlier.
Right, so we're getting a bond for four point five million dollars for the police station. But we only intend to spend a million dollars of that in the, in fiscal year twenty-five.
Of, of the bond for it?
Of the bond.
Okay.
So the other three and a half million has to go to a reserve just for a police station.
Okay. I just wanna make sure, because I was kinda confused with that, where the three point five's coming from, so, thank you.
Any further questions?
Okay, so we have an additional, um, forty-two thousand three fifty-seven, so that will reduce the pool from transfer from, ah, sorry. It will reduce the transfer from reserves, so I just have to.
All right. You're on the water and sewer operator. Mr. Spont, would you like to take my seat?
I'm right. I just found out basically the water was, in my past years, the water and sewer budget is pretty much, it is what it is, and unfortunately we're kinda required to spend it. We're not changing that much.
The question's on page one.
Just, sorry, one other question. I notice some things are going up and down on, maybe Dick can answer, or Barney. Line item four four nine four under income. I noticed that the E N R operating and maintenance expenses, we're, we budgeted less for this year. We went back to twenty twenty-two. Is there
I can answer.
particular reason, or Katie can? Okay.
Um, so in fiscal year twenty-three, we received seventy-four thousand two thirty-seven, so that's what we budgeted in for twenty-four, but then we only received fifty-nine six fifteen. I have contacted the state about how they determine what we get, and they're, they really have no explanation. They're like, sometimes you get more, sometimes you don't. So in twenty-three, we got more, which was great, um, and then we went back down to our normal fifty-nine six fifteen.
That doesn't surprise me with that answer. Okay, but I mean.
We, we budget based on what we got the previous year.
Okay, but I guess what I was saying is, asking is, say, the seventy-four, did that cover all the expenses for E, E, E N R cost related? Or the grant, do you know, or what? I guess, did we kick in any funding for the E N R O and M expenses under when we got seventy-four thousand, do you know?
So we put in that system
If the state.
Before I started.
Yeah, but I'm just trying to figure out if we gotta put money towards something, if the state's been paying for it in the past.
The installation of the E N R was a hundred percent funded. It was like a three million dollar project. And, um, with that, they said that they would give us O and M for so many years, but there's no guarantee of us getting that in the near future, so it's, it's just something that they, uh.
They give us.
So far to date, they've been giving us money, and that's a good thing.
And we adjust as needed if they operate. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Page two. Take a chance to review them if you have any questions. Hey Barney, real quick for the, just looking at the twenty twenty-five prep under fifty-three oh four, we have a hundred and thirty-three thousand. Is there a specific sewer system we're looking at repairing in twenty twenty-five?
So this.
I think.
Okay, sorry. This is the maintenance of all sewer related, like all the sewer stations, the pumps, the, yeah.
Okay.
Um, and I try to put notes when they, like when things adjust a lot, um, and the, unfortunately, possible just come up.
Okay, so we're just
Yeah.
expecting it to go up and.
Yeah, and I mean, it's based on, you know, twenty twenty-three's actuals and then what we spent year to date on the projected stuff.
And this is operating, not happening.
Yeah.
Got a question.
Yep.
Um, and maybe this isn't the right page, but it's a general question and then you get to the page and answer it or. So PFAS, PFAS remediation, PFAS treatment. Is there anything?
Oh, wait a minute, we, we lost it. Somebody turned off the mic.
There it shuts down.
Oh, the, the mic's.
Yeah, I don't know how many hours.
There was.
I just want my timer to stop.
Steve, PFAS is in the capital side.
Okay.
Page three.
Great, thank you.
The testing, the, the quarterly testing is on the operating side though, under the water.
Yeah, I think that's not that.
Yeah.
Hey, Keith, just to clarify for me, so twenty thousand for quarterly, that's not each quarter we earn twenty thousand, correct? It's just the total for, so each quarter is about five?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure that it didn't, it did not jog off with the total number of the thirty-two and the twenty, so, okay, cool. Thank you.
All right, if anyone wants to move to page two. All right, page.
I think, page three, question, just more of clarification. On the administrative fifty-one one ten audit fees, what are the audits for? Is it like the annual?
So the audit fees on the water side is for, um, the single audit that we have to do for the ARPA funds.
Oh, okay, for the ARPA, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, it's not something that we normally.
Right, now, whenever you spend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand in federal funds, you have to get a single audit. And because the majority of the ARPA funds were like water and sewer infrastructure, that's why it's charged for water and sewer.
Yeah, so once we finish using the ARPA funds, there should not be a need for.
Well, then we're moving into the PFAS fund, so we're probably still gonna have that.
All right, thank you.
Any follows up, any follow-ups on three?
We're on page four now?
We shouldn't be on page four yet.
Okay, so.
My, this year, well, my twenty-four percent is what we left.
Add it, many expenses.
Yeah, we got it.
I would say. But it's in effect twenty-five, it's about a hundred.
So you're gonna do?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. Sorry, you have a question? All right, you have a question?
I will say for the first. I will say for the first year and the last couple, so probably since twenty-one, we do have a transfer over to capital from operating.
What?
Yes.
Katie, I got a question on page five, just more general question. Under the summary, the other revenue, I might have saw this in the previous pages and just playing. So what are the, some of the sources of the other revenue under here, do you know? Maybe Dick knows? It's on page five, under summary.
Um, that is interest income on investments, penalty for late fees, miscellaneous...
Miscellaneous fees and revenue, okay.
Water tower revenue, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to think.
Just stuff related not directly to the billing, like of the water.
Okay, I just noticed that went down. So I just was wondering if it was something, but you said it's miscellaneous fees.
Well, I mean, it would go down because that state grant isn't there, so that's twenty thousand right there.
I think, got you. Thank you.
Any questions? All right.
All right, so on the water sewer capital side, I do have a change in doing our ARPA...
Audit?
The information that we had to just put in. So every year you have to go in and tell them how much you spent so far.
Yeah, I was in the middle.
Yeah, so your reports are ARPA reporting. I was driving like...
It's a workflow.
So, um, it looks like what we anticipated spending on the water main replacements is coming in a little bit less than what we thought we were going to spend. About a hundred and thirty thousand less than what we anticipated spending. So we are going to add that hundred and thirty thousand to the lab upgrade because that's an already approved project. And so we just, I just have to add the hundred and thirty in revenue for ARPA and then increase the laboratory expenses from one forty to two seventy. If that's okay.
Now, will that complete the upgrades for the lab, the two seventy? Or do we still have more upgrades to do for the lab?
That should complete it.
Okay.
A question. I, I may have missed a beat here, so I apologize, but is, this is additional money? I remember last year we approved some funding for the, to reevaluate the lab. So this is on top of that?
Yes. So, yeah, yeah. So we thought we had a little bit, um, so last year we were like, okay, we're going to have a little bit left over. And now we, now that the water main project is going to be completed this year, we know exactly how much, yeah.
All right, any other questions? Page two.
Um, this is where, no, I think it's page three, is where you'll see the PFAS.
Okay, okay. We're still on page two, right? Okay. I think I got one quick question again regarding the inflow and infiltration, line nineteen thirty-two. Is eighty thousand just a placeholder? I had this marked before. Is eighty thousand a placeholder or do we know where we're going to be spending that on that INI?
We don't know exactly, but we do have some manholes that we need to complete when we start those. So that was part of it.
Okay, but...
We did most of the sanitary sewer lines that we wanted to do. But we need to do a follow-up, check of everything and kind of see where we're at. And then we might find an extra blend.
So then what we project to get in the part they use?
Eighty thousand is what we were putting in yearly before the ARPA funding.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Any other questions on page two?
So a question, a question on the PFAS line nineteen fifty-two. So again, just remind me again, so we're, we, we applied for grants. We got approved for two pumping stations?
Yes.
And do we have, do we have an additional request pending?
We, we do. I'll let Barney speak to it. Yeah, the second request went in January and we should hear, I think last time we heard in like June, July as a initial, but that would go for a public review in September. I think is when we got the official, you got the grant.
Okay, are we asking for an additional one or an additional two? What are, what are we asking for?
An additional two.
Two, so that'll give us four. Do we have five pumping stations?
We have five pumping stations. Station four has zero PFAS.
Okay.
And that's been consistent.
All right.
So with this final grant, we will be, for the most part, we will filter it through PFAS.
Soon, soon.
And my understanding, and Barney, thank you for your email response, those grants include not only the physical equipment, but the filtration resin that has to be, you know, replaced so many times a year or whatever for a ten-year period, correct? So that's, that's a good thing.
Land acquisition as well.
Okay, good. Great.
Barney, one quick question too. Underwater system nineteen-ten. It says we've got fifty-five hundred for scope of work for elevated tank number three. Which one's tank three, do you?
Century Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on three?
All right, page four.
Water is going to go until we...
I think Katie will just have to update the summaries on here, they're counting for the hundred and forty.
So, yes, I've, I've already updated it on my, on this one.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, cool. Thank you.
I have a, a question. And it may, it may not be on this section. It may be on operating. It's a generic question. So with, with potential development projects, potentially getting approved and then remaining need to be done on, you know, to get, to get permits from MDE on, on water and such. Are those costs of the town already included as your routine business? Or is there extra funding needed to, to process those? Doesn't the town actually submit the request for the permits to MDE? I mean, do we need extra money for, for that workload or is that considered part of your regular duties? Does that make sense?
For the PFAS?
No, for the, for, for example, the Beck property or Green Tree property, you still need to get permits, right? From MDE. And we do that?
Um, trying to think of last time.
Is that like your time as part of your staff time?
Yeah, I mean, we, we would be involved in it, yes.
But it's no additional funding needed. It's just part of your, your many duties, Barney?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we're exempt from fees for, for that.
Councilmember, they falls under everyone's description as other duties as, as a...
I understand. Thank you.
All right, any questions on five?
I think the, I think we have to go through staff orders?
Yeah, closed session.
So we're going to go into a closed session. So what I'll do is I will roll call into a closed session. At the conclusion of our closed session, the budget workshop will then be over. Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
Councilmember Munder?
Aye.
It's, Council Secretary Letty?
Aye.
Councilmember Deveron?
Aye.
I have an aye as well. We will now move into a closed session.